We are live.
Okay, thank you and welcome everyone. This meeting is called to order in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Annual notice of this meeting was provided to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Highland Park Planet on January 5th, 2022. In addition, notice of this meeting via Zoom was faxed to the Home News Tribune and emailed to the Star Ledger and the Highland Park Planet on January 28th, 2022, and was posted in the Borough, on the Borough website at www.hpboro.com and on the bulletin board of Borough Hall 221 South Fifth Avenue in Highland Park, New Jersey on January 28th, 2022, and has remained continuously posted as required by law. Councilwoman Kim Cho Han, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Sure, I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for the flag, Phil. Roll call, please.
Mayor Brill Middler.
Here.
Councilwoman Canavera. Councilwoman Foster.
Here.
Councilman George.
Here.
Councilman Hale.
Here.
Councilmember Hirsch.
Here.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han.
Here.
Borough Attorney Schmier.
Here.
Borough Administrator Hovir.
Here.
And Borough Clerk, we were notified by Councilwoman Tara Canavera that she, because of a work obligation, she may be a little late to this meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, council members, do you have any questions on the agenda for tonight? No? Okay. In that case, we'll go right into council reports. And as usual, I will go in order of how you appear on my screen. So Councilman Hale, you are up first.
Thank you, Mayor, just a quick one tonight. I wanted to give people a quick update on e-scooters. I know that we, that we, we have, we have a contract to bring e-scooters to Highland Park. We had hoped that they'd be up and running by now, but it's a partnership that we're trying to work with both New Brunswick and Rutgers and the company that is doing e-scooters. And so the delay is that they're still working out some details in New Brunswick and in Rutgers that will affect how e-scooters are implemented in Highland Park. And so I just wanted to let everybody know that there's still, we're still planning on e-scooters. We're still looking forward to e-scooters. But rather than sort of jump ahead by ourself, it sort of makes a lot more sense to try and do it after the, the company works out some details with, with, with New Brunswick and, and Rutgers. So they're on their way, but I just wanted to give people an update about where we were on that. The other thing I wanted to talk about is the Neighborhood Preservation Program. The planning is coming along and doing quite well. We've had several meetings with business owners and residents about how to spend the, the, the first year's grant and how to plan money in the future. I also wanted to report that we had over 500 responses to the online survey for what to do with, with Woodbridge Avenue. And that's pretty amazing. I mean, to put that in some perspective, the, the master plan had 600. So it was, you know, it's, it's, it's a lot of people who have, who've put some interest into this. And, and one of the great things is that, that we divided up between people who work and live in the area and people who are from other parts of Highland Park to make sure that the, the, the local, the folks who are on Woodbridge Avenue, their, their perceptions weren't radically different than others. And they weren't, they sort of, it, it really did come together in the responses about the direction to take with Woodbridge Avenue for both people who lived and, and work outside of the district and people who live and work inside the district. They were very, very close and, and I thought that was, was, was heartening. The bottom line is that the, the first year, we're looking at, at, at basics. We're looking at things like crosswalks, sidewalks, trashcans, some sort of lighting and, and, and the processes that we develop an implementation plan, which is in, in process right now, based on all of the feedback that we have that outlines how we'd like to spend the first year and then sort of gives a roadmap for, for out years. So it's, it's coming along. We're still working on that, but it's, it's making really, really good progress. And I just wanted to say thank you to all the stakeholders. It's all the residents, all the business owners who have contributed. It's been a great process to this point. And I also really wanted to make sure to thank Emma Von Thum, who's Assistant Borough Administrator, who's, who's sort of been running point on this from a staff perspective. And she's really done a fantastic job along with DCA and sort of putting this together. So more to come, but, but on a right track and I think going quite well. Those are the two big ones this time. So I'll just, I'll leave it at that. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right. Councilman Hirsch, you're up next.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Matthew Hirsch. I chair the Borough's Arts and Recreation Committee. And just a couple of things coming up. Mark your calendars. It's my favorite thing. The Highland Park, New Brunswick Independence Day fireworks will take place on Sunday, July 3rd, with a rain date of Thursday, July 7th, of course, at Donaldson Park. Can't wait for that warm weather. Can't wait to see everybody in person. On Thursday, February 3rd, this coming Thursday at 6:00 PM, please join the Borough for a virtual public information center that provides neighbors and businesses with information on the intersection safety improvements being designed for Phase 1 of Highland Park's 2016 Safe Roots to School Project. It's taken, it's taken a while for us to get to this point. And so, and, and, and we're finally here. The purpose of the meeting is to learn more about and to provide an opportunity for input on the project. And neighbors are encouraged to actively participate by providing comments at the meeting by mail or by email. The link to register for the meeting is too long for me to recite here. The Public Information Center will be a virtual meeting and you can find the link to register at www.hpboro.com. And you'll see in the calendar items, if you click on the Safe Roots to School Project in the calendar at the bottom left hand of the page under February 3rd, you will find the registration link. So we need your feedback. This is for the improvement of, this is for pedestrian safety improvement in our neighborhoods. And it would be great to have as many people that participate as possible. And spread the word, please. Just a few rec programs. I just really want to just start off giving a huge thank you to Kim McGraw and Kimberly McGraw at the, at the Rec Department. You know, we've been working closely with, with, with the Rec Department to provide programming for our youngest neighbors, particularly during the pandemic, particularly when things need to be outdoors. And it's been a, you know, it's, 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 it's been, I don't want to say it's a bit, it's been a heavy, it's been a heavy lift, but it's been, it's been time consuming for, for rec, but it's also allowed them an opportunity to be creative, which I, which I just think is really exciting, you know, from a local government standpoint. And there's a bunch of stuff on the, on the Recreation's website that you can check out and, and register. And before I go through a few of them, I'm just going to give that, that email address. highlandparknj.myrec, m y r e c dot com. Just a few things. The Highland Park Youth Theater Company's Spring Program is coming up. Rehearsals meet 4:00 to 6:00 PM on April 28th, May 5th, May 12th, May 19th, May 31st, and then dates throughout June, with a final performance date on June 9th at 6:00 PM. Rehearsals and performances are outdoors here at the Highland Park Community Center. Youth baseball for grades K through 7 and softball for grades 5th through 7. The registration deadline is March 7th to avoid a $15 late fee. After March 7th, registration will be accepted based on space available. So register now if you want to sign up for youth baseball and softball. There is some equipment needed, so check out the link that I provided before to see what, 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 what players will need when they show up. Parent coaches are needed for all of the teams. So if you're all interested in coaching and you have a child who's, who is participating in the, you know, you know, the program, you can sign up to coach when you register. There is a coaching credit. One coaching credit of $75 will be given to the head coach of each team at the end of the program. This credit will be added to your account for future programming and coaches can split the $75 credit, but you must contact the, you must contact Recreation to use that option. Outdoor basketball clinics for 2nd through 8th grades are being run by Coach's Choice Select and they're, and they'll be held at Donaldson Park, March 21st through March 30th. You can check times and, and age, and age requirements. I feel like that I provided before. Space is limited. Winter Track Club will focus on speed, agility, and running form. There's five sessions from 3:00 to 4:00 PM Sundays. Just a few left, actually. We have, we have two more on February 6th and February 13th. And there are makeup dates slated for February 20th and 27th. And those are at the Municipal Recreation Complex. Rover's Winter Soccer Clinics, this is an outdoor program. Learn from the legendary Spencer, Spencer Rockman, who actually, as a former travel soccer coach, I got my F license from, from Spencer. So not only did my, several of my children learn from Coach Spencer, but I learned from Coach Spencer too. And obviously, he's an institution here in town. And he's providing professional coaching and clinics at the Municipal Recreation Complex. So the winter session is underway. It's nearing an end. There's one more session on February 6th with makeup sessions on the 13th and the 20th. Nature's, Nature Explorers, this is a really cool program for grades 3 through 5. This, this class will be run by Highland Park neighbor Colin Marks. Colin's an outdoor enthusiast and has worked with our summer camp as an outdoor nature expert. We're happy to have him back for this exciting exploration program. These sessions start off at the Meadows Trail or at a predetermined location in Donaldson Park. Again, for times and locations, visit www高landparknj.myrec.com. And that is my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Hirsch. All right, Councilwoman Kim Cho Han, you're on.
The Community Development Block Grant Committee will be holding their public hearing on applicants February 22nd at 6:00 PM. The meeting will be noticed with the details and the Zoom link. I also wish in our community a joyful Lunar New Year. Hope the year of the tiger is happier and healthier than ever for you and your family. And lastly, the worry is Black History Month. A reminder that Black history is American history and it's also the beginning of a larger conversation about how to incorporate Black history and Black voices into organizations and spaces we all occupy. And that's my report there.
Thank you. Councilwoman Foster, do you have a report?
Yes, Mayor, and Happy Black History Month. This is an exciting time for us. And I just want to give a little bit of education as we are all going through this pandemic. I want to just talk about two Americans that have contributed greatly. The first one was a slave by the name of Anasimus. He was captured from Africa and was taken to Boston. And while in Boston, they had the outbreak of the smallpox, similar to what we're having now, it was the global disease that affected everyone. And he told his master that he had a cure that could fix the disease. Of course, they did not believe him. So he tried it out on his fellow slaves. They got better. He tried it on their plantation, it got better. And eventually, the word spread and not only here in the Americas, but it spread globally. And his device that they used to eradicate smallpox was done. In 1980, however, the World Health Organization declared that smallpox was virtually eliminated. And thanks to Anasimus that provided us that service. The other person I would like to talk about is the woman by the name of Henrietta Lox. Mrs. Lox was, Mrs. Lox was sick. She had cancer. She was taken to John Hopkins University while she was at John Hopkins. And this was a time, question you, that Black people did not get a lot of attention from doctors. Mrs. Lox was taken to John Hopkins Universities, but doctors kept going in and out of her room all day long. All kinds of doctors just coming in and out. They did not give her any explanation why they were checking on her, why they was doing these, taking stem cells from her body, why they was doing all this biopsy. However, Mrs. Mrs. Lox passed. And we're familiar with the HELOC or the HEMLOC. That, the, the HEMLOC is stem cells that was taken from her that has provided cure for cancer, HIV/AIDS, polio, and a host of other diseases that her stem cell was taken. It's used widely around the globe. Actually, there's litigation in her family now because she was never recognized or given anything that pharmaceuticals made millions and millions of dollars off of. And doctors found a lot of cures for a lot of disease. Part of the, the cure that they found is not, well, we're still going through it with the, with the coronavirus. Part of her cell was tested on that to give us some relief from the coronavirus. So Mrs. Lox has been dead for many years now, but the genes that was taken from her body continues to provide more and more advancement in medicine and keeping us globally safe. So thanks to two great Americans that have contributed, not only to the US, but to the entire globe. With that said, our teen center is going to be hosting a Black History Month celebration. Stay tuned, we'll provide more information. And we are in desperate need of crossing guards. I know last month we came on and I said, oh, we have enough crossing guards. Well, as you know, crossing guard is a very challenging job. The hours are interesting and we don't have a lot of people who have the time to donate to that, but we are in need again. We are down crossing guards. So if you know of anyone who is interested in serving and coming out and helping us out, it's a paid position, please reach out to our Highland Park Police Department or to Borough Hall. There's applications available and we're in desperate need. Just a quick reminder that we had our major snowstorm this weekend. And during the snow, to remember to remove the snow after snowfall from your property and from the walkways. And do not dump the snow into the street for obvious reasons, get piled back onto your, into your space. So try to dump it as much as you can on the verge of your property. And also, please do not park your cars in areas where they do not park when snow covered. We want to avoid coming out and writing summonses and everything else like that. We also want to keep everyone safe. So just a quick reminder that during the inclement weather snowfall, that please do not dump snow into the street and remove snow after snowfall. And to avoid us coming out and having to given warnings or summons and summons. That's my report, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Council President Phil George, do you have a report? Phil, you need to unmute yourself.
Sorry about that. Couldn't find the right toggle. Yes, I do. It's a little bit lengthy because I want to report on the snowstorm because it was the first opportunity we had to actually implement the snow removal policy that the Public Works Committee, myself, Councilman Hirsch, and Councilwoman Canavera, along with Terry Hovir, Mike Wickersowitz, and Chief Abrams has designated, worked on for more formalizing and putting together all of the pieces in one place to have a better snow removal after the heavy snow, which was actually a year ago, the same weekend that catalyzed us to, to improve, to improve our snow removal. But first, I want to wish everyone a safe, comfortable, and rewarding February when we celebrate Black History Month. This month is for all of us to remember and share experiences. This year, it's more important than ever. Certain parts of our society are making inroads on the freedoms that all of us have enjoyed. I hope that we can carry this spirit forward as we celebrate and turn all of our cultural, racial, ethnic, and love backgrounds as the year moves through the months. The big item for Public Works, of course, is the snow we had this weekend. We had the first chance to stop, try out our snow removal policy. DPW advised, we had about six inches of snow and there were a few areas that were around seven to eight inches. DPW was ready for the storm under the new snow removal policy. I touched base with the superintendent on Thursday and he had the work plans in place already under the program. Starting on Friday afternoon, DPW had three brine trucks out brining the streets in anticipation of the storm. We'll talk more about brining in a second. At three, at eight o'clock PM, sorry, three salt spreaders began salting the streets and at midnight, eight plow trucks began clearing the roads and they continued through 6:00 PM the following day, at midnight to 6:00 PM the next day. The Kubota ATV plow was also in use for the Borough's parking areas, police and fire departments, as well as some pinch points in the Borough. That's one of the best capital investments we've made for DPW in a long time. DPW was also sanding and salting our steep streets on Saturday evening just before they signed out to get ahead of the freezing temperatures on those slick slopes. On Sunday, three plow trucks came back from about, about 1:00 to 6:00 PM to continue clearing the streets. I drove most of the streets and we coordinated some streets that could use more attention while the snow was melting before the crew signed off. I drove around in the storm with DPW Superintendent Mike Wickersowitz for several hours after the storm kicked up after 2:00 AM and through dawn, taking some videos by cellphone to learn the program, the new, see how the new program was working. Mike believes the new program was really working well in particular because there's a lot of cooperation and communication between the various departments, especially with the police. I could hear them calling each other to point out trouble spots and coordinating areas where people were moving their cars from the no parking when snow-covered side. There were also calling and speaking to each other in the trucks and coordinating their streets and routes so that more roads actually got some plowing instead of repeating the same streets while others were missing. That was a good coordination. I could also see the obvious challenges that DPW faces with cars on the sides of streets where they aren't supposed to park. There were a number of summonses given out. Did take some pictures of cars parked directly under the no parking when snow signs just to show how it inhibits, especially the bigger trucks where the plows are very wide, which creates a challenge to navigating the large plow trucks which are not nimble. One thing that was interesting that I also got to see how effective brining actually could be, that's the process of laying down a, a salt film mixed with water and a stabilizing agent before the snow. Mike pointed out to me that while we were driving on Cleveland, we were plowing snow that was piled up. But if you look in the rearview mirror, the stretch behind it was actually clear. And he said that was the brining really working to a good effect. So implementing that more with the three trucks now running it and as well as the Kubota really worked well. The new policy incorporates a lot of best practices from the State Department of Transportation. One of the things doing like starting brining a day or two before the storm, but they also have a hierarchy of plowing. Usually, the key is to start the primary roads when there is two inches on the ground and then the residential, adding in all the residential roads with the depth, depth hit for four inches. As the police advised during the policy drafting process, they are, they're required to have the primary roads in Highland Park that would be like Woodbridge, Raritan Avenue, Route 27, and then the large avenues going north and south. I'm sorry, east and, north and south for police and other emergency vehicles. The second priority then is the residential streets. And the third priority is sidewalks. I will also note, and hopefully it doesn't happen, but part of our policy is that DPW may have to respond to emergencies during the storm, which would, would delay cleaning the streets because it would take trucks and crews off, off the street cleaning. There may be an immediate need for police, fire, or emergency medical assistance. And the Borough personnel would have to respond to plow the driveway or access or also remove debris or accident, car accidents and so on. The other, other issue, we saw some of it, but we were a little bit fortunate because of the melting we had on Saturday is with ice. The ice control is done through the application of, of brining, which is a relatively new development as well as the salt and the combination with snow plows. But the brining process actually is to prevent the snow and ice from freezing to the pavement, not really to necessarily melt it. That way, it could be moved. And we also use salt and sand when the conditions require it, such as on the steeper roads, which were beginning to ice up as the sun went down. So they were hit with some sand and some salt. The first snowstorm with the new policy and driving around all day Saturday in my truck and also during the night hours with the superintendent did give me some suggestions. So I'm going to bring to Public Works for improvements, one of which is to ensure we have available or put into our capital plan several small vehicles to accommodate some areas, especially up in the triangle. I politely asked some crews that I saw on Saturday, late Saturday afternoon, to go through that area again. Or, you know, if they didn't have time to, to catch it the following morning. Some of the streets are really narrow with cars on both sides. The trucks were not able to get through at all. But the Kubota or one of the other small machines could get through there. I think that's really essential. Another thing we have already moved forward with is more snow blowers and also several powered one-man riding plows, which actually significantly free up man-hours and allow us to reach into the narrow, narrow places on the sidewalk. With that, Mayor, I'd like to thank the town for bearing with me on the report about salt, sand, brine, and, and big plows. That's my report.
Thank you, Council President. And I, I also want everyone to note that Council President Phil George, in his capacity as liaison to Public Works, was also working the telephones for a good part of the weekend. So again, thank you. And Borough Clerk, I just want you to note that Councilwoman Tara Canavera has joined us. And Tara, you're just in time to give your report, if you have one.
I just would like to thank everybody. Sorry, I'm late. I want to wish everybody a happy new year who's celebrating and would like to point out that I'm sure everybody did that it's National Black History Month and that's the end of my report.
Okay, thank you. All right, Borough Administrator, do you have a report?
I don't this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, Borough Attorney, do you have a report?
No report, Madam Mayor.
All right, well, I do have a report. First of all, I want to thank the many business owners, community leaders, and residents who responded constructively to the executive order I had issued on December 31st, mandating the wearing of face masks in public places in town to discourage the spread of COVID-19. The executive order was endorsed unanimously by the Borough Council at its meeting on January 4th. This executive order was informed by the unanimous recommendation of the infectious disease specialists who are on my mayor's wellness campaign. And it was based on, at that time, the current CDC guidance and the high rate of local COVID-19 infections and hospitalizations. I am pleased to note that the infection and infections and hospitalization rates in our area have decreased significantly and this dissent has been sustained for over two weeks. Additionally, vaccination rates in Highland Additionally, vaccination rates in Highland Park are strong. Ninety-four percent of our total population has had at least one dose of vaccinations. Seventy-nine percent have completed all vaccinations required. Ninety-four percent of residents aged five and up have at least one dose of vaccinations. Ninety-nine percent of residents aged eighteen plus have at least one dose of vaccinations. And ninety-nine percent of Highland Park residents aged sixty-five plus have completed all vaccinations required. So accordingly, I have allowed my executive order to expire effective Monday, yesterday, January 31st at 11:59 PM. That being said, the mask mandate remains in place for all borough-owned buildings. And I still strongly urge residents to continue wearing face masks in group settings, especially at any indoor location. It remains a low-cost measure that can help guard your health and the safety of your neighbors and family members. I recommend that everyone adopts this measure in town and we will continue to monitor closely new cases in Highland Park. I'd also like to, at this point, take a moment to thank the Department of Public Works for its work over the weekend. I know I was in touch with the Superintendent of Public Works and several council members quite a bit over the weekend on the, in the early hours on Saturday and Sunday, when our teams were out clearing roads and streets in town during the blizzard. We all appreciate the efforts of our Public Works Department. And as several people have noted, today is the first day of February marking the start of Black History Month. I've made it my habit at council meetings in February, since I've been mayor, to salute hometown heroes during this month. And I want to continue that practice now by recognizing an exemplary African-American resident who has served our town with dignity, dedication and diplomacy. Sheila Highsmith was the Chair of the Borough's Human Relations Commission for over ten years, probably closer to twenty years. We can attribute much, much of the thoughtful attention that that group devotes to intergroup relations and celebrations of diversity to her time in that leadership role. Sheila made a definite impact on the tone of our town despite the demands of a very busy career as a social worker in the New Jersey State Division of Human Services. She is still very active in our community affairs and serves on the CDBG Advisory Council and was a founding member of the Highland Park Gives a Hoot team. On the occasion of Black History Month, I extend the gratitude of the governing body and all Highland Park to Sheila for her service to this town and her work as a role model in bringing people together to foster a sense of community. Thank you, Sheila Highsmith. Alrighty. It's now time for our first public discussion session. Total time allotted is twenty-one minutes, three minutes maximum per speaker. Comments are limited to items that appear on the agenda for tonight. If you want to speak about something that is not listed on our agenda, I ask that you please hold your comments to the second public comment session, which will be later in the meeting. The Borough Clerk will monitor the time and indicate when three minutes has lapsed. She will give you a warning when there is a thirty seconds, when there is thirty seconds remaining. There will be a hard stop at the three-minute mark to ensure that everyone has time to speak. So if you would like to speak, please raise your hand by pressing the star nine button on your keypad or select the raise hand icon button in this, this application. Please press star six to unmute yourself. The Borough Administrator will announce your turn by reading out your name or the last four digits of your phone number. Please begin by telling us your first and last name as well as your address. Again, if you would like to speak about a topic that is on the agenda, please press star nine or the raise hand button now. Borough Administrator, do we have any hands?
Yes, I see one hand raised and eleven attendees.
Okay, thank you.
Looks like Abby Stern Cardinal is up. Please state your name and address.
Hi, this is Abby Stern Cardinal. I'm at 221 Harper Street. I would like to express, unfortunately, I, I am really disheartened by the fact that you let this mask mandate expire. I'm sure you won't be surprised to hear this, but I'd like to, I'd like to share this anyway. You, Mayor, you expressed that ninety-four percent of our population has one dose of the vaccine. But if you look at the population of under five-year-olds, zero percent have the vaccine. So that is, that is a very important number and you're forgetting about that number. And it is hurtful to families who have kids. I brought my daughter to our local Stop and Shop for the first time in two years because of the mask mandate. Because it was somewhat okay for me to be able to be comfortable that people would not infect her if they were wearing masks. And she lit up to be able to talk about produce, see, see our town, see something new in our town that she hadn't experienced. And I am devastated. I understand that you're saying that things are better, but if you look at any measure of the pandemic in New Jersey and in our town, we are still in the red on all of our, on all of our, our measures. I am thrilled that the numbers are going down, but we are not there yet. This was way premature and it should have been extended. And I'm really upset that, that looking at the positive changes were prematurely allowed, that we prematurely allowed this mask mandate to expire. If in a month, we're looking at, I, I'm using the colors because it's an easy way to, to discuss it. But I think we all know that we're talking about the are not, we're talking about the, the spread, we're talking about hospitalization. And when those are yellow, when those are green, great, let's get rid of the mask mandate. But they are all red, they're all bright, bright red still. And this is, this is really upsetting. If you look at these numbers, they say exercise extreme caution. That's what COVID Act Now says about New Jersey. This is not exercising extreme caution. The other thing I would like to say is that there is no harm to people wearing masks, but there is harm to people not. There is no harm for someone wearing a mask for covering their face. I also understand that this mask mandate was extremely popular in town. Of course, there are going to be some people that are frustrated, but this wasn't hurting businesses. People were still going when they chose to. And people were very happy with it. So I, I don't think you're going to change your mind. I don't think you're going to, you know, re, redo the mandate. I don't think I'm changing anything here. I just needed to express that this is very hurtful to me personally and people who are in similar situations.
Abby, I appreciate your comments. And we, I will be looking at the numbers on a weekly basis. And if we do start heading in the wrong direction again, we may readdress this. There's nothing that keeps you and your children from wearing a mask when you continue going into stores. It's just that it's not a legal mandate right now.
I just would like to add, my daughter is under two. There is something preventing her. One, she can't, even if I wanted to. And medical professionals say that under two-year-olds cannot. So that is not true. Under two-year-olds cannot and they can't be, they can't be vaccinated. So that's a critical misunderstanding of the situation. And other kids who are over two but under five do try to wear masks and honestly are incredible at doing it, but they don't wear it as consistently. So I, I very much disagree with what you just said.
Okay, thank you, Abby. Any other hands, Terry?
No, Mayor, I don't see any.
Okay, then we are going to move along. Going on to the ordinances that require second readings. Clerk, could you please report on advertising ordinance amendment to Chapter Seven, traffic moving certain no parking areas and, and adding certain no parking areas when snow covered for consideration of passage on final reading by title.
An ordinance of the Borough of Highland Park, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending Chapter Seven concerning motor vehicle parking regulation of the code of the Borough of Highland Park was duly advertised for consideration of passage on final reading by title and affidavits of publication thereto are on file. The ordinance was also posted and made available for public inspection as required by law.
Okay, may I have a motion to take up the ordinance on final reading by title?
Motion to take up ordinance.
Second.
Okay, any public hearing on this? Any hands?
I don't see any. Just a reminder to raise hand now if you'd like to comment on this ordinance. Star nine or raise hand. No, Mayor, I don't see anybody.
All right, then may I have a motion to adopt or reject this an advertising ordinance on final reading by title?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to move on to ordinances that require a first reading. Clerk, could you please report on introduction of capital ordinance providing for improvements to South Fourth Avenue, Johnson Street and Montgomery Street project, projects for consideration of passage of first reading by title?
Capital ordinance providing for improvements to South Fourth Avenue, Johnson Street and Montgomery Street projects in the County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, appropriating five hundred, three thousand, five hundred and five dollars from the Department of Transportation Municipal Aid Program, therefore, to pay the cost thereof, has been introduced in writing by the Public Work, Public Safety Committee for consideration of passage on first reading by title.
All right, may I have a motion to adopt or reject and advertise the ordinance on first reading by title?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Okay, roll call, uh, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
All right, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. May I have a motion to adopt items fourteen A through fourteen K?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster?
Yes.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes, and regarding fourteen E and F, hopefully they are familiar with our idling ordinances and the purpose of stop signs.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Okay, I am asking for your confirmation as I appoint Highland Park Volunteer Fire Department members, Edward Batista and Harrison Hague, may I have a motion to confirm?
Motion to confirm.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes, and thank you very much for your dedication.
Councilwoman Foster?
Absolutely, and thanks to everyone who's joining. We're still looking for more members. Thank you for serving.
Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
Okay, I would like to appoint the following to our some boards and commissions. Marsha Schiffman to the Shade Tree Advisory Committee. Beth Stevens and Abby Stern Cardinal to the Board of Health. Beth is a full member and Abby is alternate one. And Kai Stevens to the Mayor's Equity Advisory Council. May I have a motion to confirm?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Canavera?
Yes.
Councilwoman Foster? Councilman George?
Yes.
Councilman Hale?
Yes.
Councilmember Hirsch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han?
Yes.
All right, we're moving on to the second public participation area. And now is the time for any speaker who will be given three minutes, but may comment on any topic. The Borough Clerk will monitor the time and will offer a thirty-second warning and then indicate when three minutes has lapsed. The session will wrap up by nine PM. If you would like to speak, please raise your hand by pressing the star nine on your phone keypad or select the raise hand icon button on this application. Please unmute yourself by pressing star six. And the Borough Administrator will announce your turn by reading out your name or the last four digits of your phone number. Please begin by telling us your first, your first and last name as well as your address. Again, if you would like to speak about a topic on the agenda, please press star nine or the raise hand button now. And Borough Administrator, could you announce if anyone has a raised hand?
Yes, I'd be happy to. Looks like we have one hand raised and nine attendees at this point. It looks like Leora Wanger is up next. Please state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Leora Wanger. I live at 133 North Seventh Avenue in Highland Park. Okay, yeah, thank you for clearing my street. It was fine job. My, my street is very easy to go down. I appreciate that. Okay, so I have a question about the wording of the mask mandate. I'm just going to read it. Effective December 31st, all persons in Borough, Borough of Highland Park should wear a mask at all times while indoors at any public accommodation. That, that's my question. Including but not limited to while attending religious services. So we were discussing the wording. And it says, someone implied that public accommodation means a religious services in, let's say, a high school gym, but doesn't refer to a synagogue. So we're not, I wasn't very clear about that. I'm just trying to understand what a public accommodation is. Thank you.
Okay, Leora, if you missed the earlier part of the meeting, I did note that that mandate expired on January 31st yesterday. But to answer your question, it covered all public gathering spaces, which could include a house of worship or a movie theater if we had one, or a community center, any, any place where people would be going indoors and gathering.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else?
No, Mayor, I see no other hands raised.
Okay, then we'll take a, council members, do you want a break or do you want to just keep going into work session?
It's only seven fifty, Mayor. Unless anybody needs a break, I would suggest we go right to the work session.
Okay. All right, great. And let's move on. We'll enter into the work session. No formal action to be taken. And the only item on the work session this evening is the lead service line inventory and next steps, which Borough Administrator Terry Hofer has put on the agenda. Terry?
Hi, thanks, Mayor, for allowing me this time to, to brief everybody on this important project. If, those of you may or may not be aware, may have written, read some headlines in the recent few months, but there are new federal guidelines and New Jersey law governing the treatment of lead service lines. You know, this comes out of some of the larger sensational headlines and some of the very You know, this comes out of some of the larger sensational headlines and some of the very serious situations throughout the country to try to, to, to address what do systems do about lead service line? And just, if you can bear with me one second, I do want to show a picture that the DEP provided that will, I'll explain in a little bit, just so that everybody's on the same page about what, what we mean about a lead service line. You know, what is it? Um, can you all see this photo, I mean this image? So essentially, the service line is the connection, the water pipe to your house or to a home or a property, that goes all the way from the water main through this gooseneck connection and through the curb stop where you know, kind of that boundary line is and all the way to the home. Uh, and you can see that's where the water meter is and then there's a house shut off valve. That's you might be familiar with from your basement. In Highland Park, the homeowner is responsible for that whole stretch from the main right over into that, to the, to the property itself. So I just wanted to put that out there because that's gonna be something you're gonna hear more about and I just want to make it really clear. The, this law however, puts the obligation on the water system to address any lead service lines that, um, and puts a timestamp, basically a ten year period in which water systems have to address any lead service lines, meaning remove and replace, uh, within that ten year period. So this is something, as a small utility, we are having to comply with. So that's why, you know, we're talking about it. And one of the things, the first step that we had to do was put an initial inventory together. The current version of that inventory is up on our website, if you go to HBborough.com and go to Water, uh, Department, uh, in the Resources section on the right, you'll see Lead Service Line Inventory. We will, we're obligated and will continue to maintain that. So as we learn better information, updated versions will be made available. So right now you can see our current service line, um, inventory on our website. All of this is required, but we do this willingly, it's, this is, this makes a lot of sense. So we did an initial service line inventory base, thankfully, I'm told by our licensed operators, we maintained what is a very old fashioned looking ledger book for many, many years, where we wrote in every time we, you know, there was a tap into the main, we would write down where, what date and the locate, and the type of material. Some of that, those records aren't perfect because it's humans over time, but we have some that go back to the eighteen hundreds in this book. And so that gives us probably better information than a lot of, uh, systems have right now. So while what I'm about to report may sound like, oh my God, how can we not know all this? All of these, remember all these regulations and some of the awareness around the, the issue of lead, especially for children, uh, came about in the kind of late eighties. So water systems weren't necessarily tracking the materials used on these service lines, especially in, as is the case in Highland Park, when the cus- it's a customer owned service line. So we are lucky to have that. And what the, the legislation, the law requires is a notification to go out to anybody who's, who in our, um, inventory, we believe may have a lead service line. Now, we don't know for sure because somebody might have had that service line replaced and it didn't make it back into the book to, to indicate the replace. So, but to be on the safe side, what's required is a letter to go to that homeowner, property owner and the occupant of the, of the house. So we would send a letter to the owner of record as well as whoever's living there, letting them know that this may be an issue. And one thing I want to make sure, make sure is very clear, just because there might be a lead service line and we don't know that that's the case, doesn't mean there's lead in the drinking water in the house, I just want to make that very clear. It does, uh, mean we're gonna be paying very close attention and there's additional sampling requirements that we'll be building in throughout the process of this, you know, replacement program. But I don't want to kind of alarm anybody unnecessarily that this is something you should be aware of. Uh, however, we A, don't know a hundred percent that it's there until we can do some more observations. And then B, um, it doesn't mean that there is actually lead in your drinking water in those properties because there are treatments in place right now from our water provider to basically create, neutralize any corrosive elements and create, uh, protection in the pipes so that we don't have exceedances. So I just want to make sure, because the letter, there is a letter that the, that the DEP is, is basically drafted for us to send, which kind of restricts our ability to explain. Uh, but essentially, anybody who's in our inventory who according to our records may have a lead service line and it could also be a, a service line comprised of material that may have included lead. There's, there's a material called tourroy, which I never heard of, which may or may not have lead, but we won't have a way of knowing unless we do further investigation. Or with galvanized pipes, because apparently that's also a potential, uh, lead source. So according to the current version of our inventory, we have about fifty-five properties that we believe may have this condition and will be getting that letter. I'm gonna look at my deadline really quickly in the next couple of weeks. It's due by the February twenty-first, we have to mail those letters certified. That said, we are not done, we're not, because we have a lot of unknowns in our inventory. Um, and we, we are obligated to continue to explore those unknowns. And so one of the things we'll be doing is, uh, we have a meter replacement program in, that is coming in, so as part of that, as we replace, we're gonna at least be inspecting the pipe in the basement. Now, one of the challenges is you could have a situation where just the gooseneck is still lead and then the whole rest of the pipe has been replaced. And it's gonna be very difficult to assess that and, and we're still waiting for some of the regulatory guidance from the DEP about how do we figure, how do we deal with that? Like, do we have to sample, do we have to dig up the road? We don't, I don't have the answer to that question, the, the guidance is still coming out. But in the short run, we're gonna be reaching out to those fifty-five property owners and residents and or business owners, if it happens to be a business, uh, to alert them to the fact that this, we, according to our records, this may be a condition and we're gonna, we want to work with them on those next steps. And we're also be making sure the licensed operator and myself are available to answer any questions that they have. You know, our, all that contact information will be provided in the letter as well as, uh, I'm gonna be building out a page in our website in the next week so that people, more of this information will be easier to spot. So just to kind of, that's kind of the front end of this, but the legislation essentially requires that you have to address ten percent of your service lines over the ten year compliance period. So as we move forward, right now, we believe that's about fifty-five service lines, but again, we have, like I mentioned, we have those unknowns still and we're gonna have to work that through and the inventory is a living document. And as we learn more through the meter replacement inspections, we also, when we do meter, excuse me, uh, water main projects, we'll be inspecting the services as part of that. When we have a road opening due to an emergency repair, our, our crew will be inspecting, because we want as many eyes on the material in the ground as possible to try to really address what we need to, um, and comply with this, this requirement. There are annual reporting requirements that this, the water system in the borough runs, will be, uh, required to meet and we're, we are, like we said, we have our inventory already submitted. And so the next step is informing those fifty-five properties for which we believe our last best record is they may have lead, uh, service lines or lead materials in their service line, uh, you know, alerting them to that. And, um, then over time, I guess by la- by July twenty-second, we owe the DEP an updated inventory, so we're hopeful to have more information to layer in from that point. And I think that's, that's probably all I was gonna, in terms of the weed, there's, there's a lot more to the legislation. Matt, I see Matt has his hand raised ma'am, but, um, he, he, I, I don't know if that's too much or too little, you, please ask.
Before we go to any questions from council, could you just, um, iterate the number of, um, possible lead lines that you're talking about, um, in the borough? And, um, attack the timeframe again?
So the, so it's a ten year period with which to address, meaning they must be removed. Okay, and replaced, so just be, be advised, like, it's pretty clear on that. And right now, we believe that number is fifty-five. We are out of, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't print out my, the, the page that has our total. I'll give you order of magnitude thirty-five hundred service lines, okay? I, I don't, it's not to the exact number, but just to give you order of magnitude. So we have, uh, so that we believe that this initial letter has to go to, because that's, that's the obligation. That said, we're gonna continue some communications because we would like to enlist the help of customers and if anybody wants us to inspect, we are happy to do so. But it's, it's not always easy, especially coming into a pandemic, to get people to invite you into their basement. So, but, but so from now, based on the current inventory and the records we have in place, that's fif- fifty-five, uh, properties that we will be sending that required letter to by February twenty-first. Again, we're obligated to keep improving our inventory and if we identify other properties that we need to then send that letter to, we will do so. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you, and, um, okay, so I'm gonna go in order of how you know appears since you all flipped around on my screen.
Yeah, they did that to me too, I'm not sure why.
So, uh, Councilman Hale, you have a question?
So I, I, I understand that there's a lot of moving parts and that we're still sort of, so I, I, but I guess what I'm wondering is, at some point, most likely, s- some of those fifty-five houses are gonna have to have the pipe replaced. But how is, w- w- once it's determined that yes, this is definitely a lead pipe or definitely this has to be replaced, how long does the homeowner have to have that replaced? Or is there a schedule by which, it's, I'm a little confused because you said by ten years, we have to have it fixed, but I, what's the process within those ten years?
I, I, I skimmed over an important point, uh, so the utility is responsible for the replacement. Okay, which is a conflict and, and that has been brought to the DEP's attention because if you have a leaking service line, that's your problem as a homeowner. But if there's a lead service line, that's the utility's problem. And it's just a, a, an accepted conflict that we, we just have to live with. So the utility responsible will have to come up with a schedule. So I, I am not totally familiar, like, if, I, I believe it's, you have to be addressing, so let's assume it's fifty-five and nothing changes. So you basically have to divide that by ten and, you know, five point five or whatever it is, you know, five a year or six and five a year until you meet that got, deadline. There are funding opportunities, just to be clear, uh, there's a lot, I've been on that, like, a lot of webinars lately, um, for this, I, the downside, we kind of are, once again, in that in between, from what I'm learning, we, because we don't have a ton of known lead service lines and we're, we're not a, what the, the state kind of, and federal government categorizes as a small system. So small systems kind of get it in a special, we're kind of right in between, we're not a big system by any means, but we're not a small system. So it's unclear to me how big of a priority the borough is gonna be for that funding because depending on if our inventory, for some reason it gets, it really balloons, we may be in a, maybe in a position to apply for additional support. But I think if our initial assessment is generally right, maybe it's a hundred, let's just, you know, say, I think it's a manageable number. The hope is to try to figure out these locations sooner than later because one of the major costs can be road restoration. And so to the extent that we've got road projects planned and PC and G, so the sooner we know where these are and we can overlay that into upcoming projects, the better. And so, but it's gonna be one of those things, I won't have the luxury of, you know, not doing the lead service lines, if, you know, if, first say one of the roads we did last year, well, maybe I could make it come down five years later just because, you know, for timing reasons. But, you know, there, there's gonna be an inherent conflict, or is it gonna be a challenge, I should say, to try to, to, to negotiate that? So to be really clear, the utility of the borough is on the hook for the replacement program. So we have to design that program, how we're gonna meet it, the DEP's gonna wanna know exactly what the plan is, how we're keeping that inventory fresh, and then we're gonna have to, um, go out and do it. We may have to look at some ordinances because we will be working on private property, but there, I, there, there's a lot of precedent for that, I know Newark and other towns that are much further along in this have kind of pioneered that and I think there's, that's kind of less of a question in my mind. But, but it is a challenge because, you know, you're digging up someone's yard, you know, I would think people would want it to be addressed, but it's not always the case. So it's gonna be a lot to manage, which is why I think there's two concerns. One, we don't want to alarm people unnecessarily, on the flip side, we want their attention because we need the cooperation and, and partnership with the property owner so that we can implement this program. So that's, that's, I guess, I hope I answered that because I.
You did, I, thank you, that was an important clarification, I appreciate it.
Borough attorney, in your experience with other municipalities, have, have they gone through this process?
Madam ma'am, they're going through it now.
We're all together.
And, uh, and, and they're contacting their users and they're setting up appointments. They, they, I've seen a few of the, of the communities have actually asked the residents to go down cellar and scrape off your pipe and see if it's a copper pipe or a lead pipe. And that's one of the ways some of the towns are doing it, but it's just really arrived and every community's gonna have to do it.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Hirsch, do you have a question?
Councilwoman Kim Cho Han, you're, you, you, I think you were before me, but I don't see your hand raised.
I, I don't see her hand up, that's. I put my hand down, I thought, I thought it was the residents', uh, also responsibility.
I, I realize I, I, I kind of skipped around there, so I apologize for the confusion there.
Okay.
Cool, um, just to note, um, I have some familiarity with, with this law. The, um, Terry, do we know roughly what percentage of multifamily homes are, would be affected of the fifty-five, use that number?
I, I don't have that information, unfortunately, the records where our water information is don't necessarily tell me, one, it, it would tell me commercial or residential, but not that nuanced, unfortunately, I don't believe.
No, that's okay, just because I, it, it's, for, for this information to be passed on to the, to the renter, is, is part of the requirement of this law that they.
Yeah, we'll be sending letters, so for example, for a rental property, we have the, you know, the, where the property tax bill goes is, you know, town, it may not be Highland Park, it'll go there, but we're also obligated to write, you know, to the occupants of two-two-two South Fifth Street, you know, so that whoever lives there should feel empowered to open the mail and, and be informed about it. And also there is a, uh, I believe Spanish language translation requirement as well, uh, on, on the notice. So to the extent that that's a consideration in terms of English as a barrier and certainly we can make our, our, um, we have some language services available if we have questions that come in that we can't answer, be due to a language barrier.
Cool, thank you.
Are there any other questions for Terry? Right.
And this will be something Public Works Committee will be on the front lines with, but I'll bring back to the council, of course, as we hit these kind of milestones in the program.
Thank you, Terry, good report. All right, um, we don't have anything for executive session, so may I have a motion to adjourn? You need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
One.
Hi.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Night.